Welcome to our December 2nd, 2024 council meeting. And if you would join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our guest pastor tonight from the First Southern Baptist Church, Trevor.
Good evening, Mayor Rawlins and city council members. Thankful for the opportunity to pray for you guys. Before I pray, I always like to hear from God and His word. And so First Timothy 2:1 through 6 say this, "First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, and intercessions and thanksgivings be made for all people, and for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires that all people be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth. There is one God, and there is one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus, who gave Himself as a ransom for all, which is the testimony given at the proper time." Let me pray. Father, we're thankful that you are a great and mighty God. We're thankful for Jesus, who is the King of kings and Lord of lords over all of creation. And we're thankful for the gift of government. We're thankful for the gift of leaders, of men and women who sacrifice their lives to help others and support others and to help specifically Augusta. We pray, Lord, that you give our leaders tonight wisdom as they decide on matters of ordinances and policies and things I don't even understand, but they do. And so we're thankful, Lord, that you have set aside these individuals at this appointed time so that we might live peaceable lives, and we might live quiet lives, and that ultimately we might live godly lives in light of who your Son is and what He's done for us on the cross. We're thankful for Jesus. We're thankful that He came to save those who needed saved. They came to save sinners like me. We're thankful, Lord, that you are a great and mighty God. We pray you bless this meeting, and let be ultimately for our good in your glory. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Bring us down to review of our minutes from our November 18th meeting. Counsel.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th, 2024 city council meeting.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move down to our appropriation ordinance, number 11A dated November 20th, 2024. Questions from you guys?
I'll make a motion for the approval of appropriation ordinance, number 11A dated November 20th.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Call for visitors now. If you're here and you weren't on the agenda, be the time to come speak up. Okay. We'll go on down to our first item of business, our 2025 special alcohol grant recommendations. Staff?
The mayor and council, our assistant to the city manager worked with the ad hoc committee on these recommendations. But as a real quick matter of overview, the special alcohol funding is actually something that comes to us from a tax on alcoholic liquor sales in our community. The way that that funding comes into our budget and how it's distributed is outlined by state statute. So you do have the state statute, but then also the charter ordinance has been adopted by the governing body that outlines how those funds can be used. The money is split a third, a third, a third between the general fund, special parks fund, and special alcohol fund. That's also the split that's spelled out in state law. In the special alcohol fund, that money is spoken to in the state law as well, but through your charter, you have added additional potential uses that allow you to apply that money towards specific things. State statute speaks to that funding being used for activities related to drug and alcohol awareness, prevention, treatment, all of those sort of things. What you added in your charter was the addition of domestic violence programs a few years ago, partly because domestic violence and intoxication in some way are a lot of times linked. And so that's been the one change that your charter added that's different than the state statute. The manner in which you've chosen to outlay these funds to our community is through this special alcohol grant program, which has been going on for longer than I've been here. I don't know when it started, but it's been going on for a long time. And you guys appoint a committee each year to review applications that are sent out to various groups and organizations in town that might qualify. And then they make their ask, and the committee reviews and makes recommendations to the council for how that funding should be spent. So with that background, I know that Shawna worked with the committee and helped come up with the recommendations. I'm going to let her speak to the committee's work and what they're suggesting for you tonight.
Good evening. On November 4th, the city council appointed Bob Bailey, Eric Burke, and Sean Davis to the ad hoc committee to review the special alcohol grants. And on November 13th, the committee met. That was Bob Bailey and Sean Davis. Eric Burke had to miss that meeting. But the committee discussed the special alcohol grant applications and put together their recommendations. And if you, on this table here, they're highlighted in green. And the current balance for the special alcohol fund at the moment is approximately 14,700. And so the committee put together a recommendation of how to divide that funding out. And then after that committee met, I was reviewing the amount available. And then I talked to the finance director, Erica Jones, about what our expected balance might be by the end of the year. Because you might remember last year, the council decided to wait or to, they decided to divide up the balance on December 31st of that account, and then they divided it evenly among the different organizations. So I talked to Erica Jones, and she said that we normally get between $2,500 and $3,000 per quarter, and we expect to get that in the middle of December. So if the council wanted to, we expect that that balance would probably, most likely be the 16,800, which is in the yellow column, or more. So if the council wanted to, they could divide that funding up again, like on December 31st. And then staff could pay that out in 2025, in January of 2025. So I put this column in yellow in case you wanted to do that so that the groups could get more money. Or alternatively, you could just go with the committee's recommendation that's in green, the 14,700, because that's what we have on hand now. And then anything that came in in December would be used for the next year. So it's kind of up to you. But if, really, the reason I was kind of compelled to look at it was in the green column there, a couple of the organizations would be getting a little bit less than last year. So if you waited till the December payment came in, then it would, and then divided that up, then they would get more than they got last year. So it's really council's prerogative how you want to divide that up. You can approve the committee's recommendation there in green. You can decide to divide it up on December 31st based on this estimated amount of about $2,000 more. Or you can make any adjustments to the recommendation funding that you see fit. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So what if, on the estimation of whatever December's is, if we come in short and then we agree to the 16,800?
Well, I thought about that too. And I thought you could just say that council could make a motion to divide up the balance, whatever the balance is, on December 31st.
Shawna? They probably could make a motion that they would approve what's in the yellow column, contingent on funds being available at the end of the year, and adjust if not. I would think that would, that way we don't have to wait for another, for them to reconsider it.
Right.
But then if there aren't funds available, then go back maybe to the green recommendation or something.
Right.
So how did you decide which funds would get the additional?
So in the yellow column, I just took, the committee had specified in their recommendation that they were wanting this Bright Futures to have 3,000 allocated. And so I moved that number over, the 3,000. And then I took this total, the 16,800, that I kind of came up with as an estimate of what we would probably have. And then I subtracted that 3,000 out for the Bright Futures, and then I divided it evenly among the rest.
Except for the school district. So what was the difference there, the 2,300 versus the 16,500?
Oh, in the green column, so they had said they wanted to give 3,000 to Bright Futures. And then they had figured out how much it would be even amongst all of them, and they got the 2,100. But I think, I think they had taken away, what was it, 350 each from the school district 402 and the Family Life Center safe house. I think they had taken $500 each away from those to give that money to the Bright Futures. So I guess they divided it evenly. It would have been 2,100 to each one, but they decided to go with 500 less for the school district and the Family Life Center safe house so that Bright Futures could have that 3,000 number that they were asking for.
Shawna, on that recommendation for Bright Futures, was there reasoning or justification as far as why they felt so strongly on that specific organization or that specific request?
So I can answer that. So for Bright Futures, we actually had people show up. They also, part of this pre-prom party, it's kind of a, it's a preventative. So to me, a lot of this other stuff is after the fact. This was more of a preventative where they were having the kids go to, what was it?
Safe location.
A safe location. Their truck there, they're not allowed to leave. They've got people watching over them. And that's why we kind of thought that it's starting at bottom level. So.
And so counsel, if this is helpful, I'm looking at the columns. Basically, the way I understood what you said, Shawna, is if there was enough money available, that all of these numbers would have been that 2,100, except for the Bright Futures of 3,000, if there was enough money available?
Right. It's in the yellow.
And so that's what, that's my understanding of what happened for why those two were lower. So in the yellow column, the presumption is that you have enough money to satisfy all those requests. So you just divided, it sounds like you divided it evenly across everybody and then kept the Bright Futures number the same as what the committee recommended?
Yes, I'd just like to ask the people who were on the committee, is this, are these numbers, are they good for you with the yellow column also?
Yeah, that's fine. Well, yeah, that's fine. Is there something we can do to make it, if we're going to do this every year, just to avoid the confusion? Can we put that in our charter that it's going to go year to year instead of? Because I'll be honest, since I did it a year before, when I got that number, I assumed that was what we were estimating to get at the end of the year. So.
I think what happened in the past was there was, that fund had built up some money. So it was pretty consistent year to year, wasn't it, Josh? And then the last few years, we've dipped into where there's not as much carryover. So we are dependent on what we actually receive.
You've always had a cash balance in past years, and now you don't have a cash balance anymore. So the only money you have is what comes in that year. Your committee, in this case, met before that final payment came in. So the question is, do you want to operate off of the known money, which would have been that 14,700?
Are you saying that we didn't?
Estimated total?
We didn't meet the earlier, we met earlier last year. We met about the same time last year, and we still went with what was towards, what we estimated was going to be the end of the year.
Well, last year, it was worded that, yeah, last year, it was worded that whatever money we had on December 31st, council decided would, they would divide evenly among all the applicants. And last year, we had five applicants. And our funding last year had come in lower. And so I think it was, yeah, it was 9,675 was all we had last year. And then divided by five applicants, that was 1,935 each. And so that's how it was decided last year, was to give each one the 1935.
Shawna, would it be an option for them to wait until January to meet so that they knew what the actual cash balance was at that time? It might delay the payments by a couple of weeks.
As long as the organization.
You don't issue the payments until the end of January 1st to February.
So that all comes out of 2025 budget anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it wouldn't necessarily be problematic if you wanted to shift the timing of this, to push that back, because what you're awarding is 2025 calendar year money. So it probably wouldn't hurt in the future if you wanted to have the committee meet maybe a little bit later, or even right after the 1st of January or something, and then award, you would know your exact number. The only way that that affects anybody is if any of these organizations need their money right then at the start of January before you award it.
They wouldn't get it then anyway, though. It's usually February.
That's the only way that that would really affect anybody.
Or we could make them, just approve the recommendation of the group and then just go from November to November every year.
You can get all of those options, absolutely.
So I'm going to make that.
Because we need to keep it the same, because we don't want to have these discussions. Anytime we decide to give somebody a little less money, we don't want to have to figure out a way to get them. I mean, everybody's going to be wanting just to re-figure it. And so, I mean, I can tell you what the gusto one, the reason I was willing to take some away from them was, it was basically the way I went around it. It was basically to pay for a teacher, to teach a program. Yeah. But I don't remember this Family Life Center one, why?
That one's their 24-hour hotline for domestic abuse.
Okay.
I think that'd be my one point of feedback, just for the committee work being done. And Shawna, I appreciate the perspective. I think as I looked at the requests, to your point, Bright Futures, their specific request was for the after-prom funding that they'll continue to fundraise for. And I understand the preventative request of that. And at the same time, I see all the other, all the other organizations are crisis treatment. They are people in crisis that those funds are being used for. So I don't necessarily agree to remove funds from the ones that are treating and helping folks in crisis, to move money towards an after-prom request. But I do understand the preventative nature of that request.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the council's or the committee's recommendation, the $14,700, and then let the group next year decide on whatever funds that they have up through November next year to do that.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank everybody that worked on that.
Absolutely.
And the discussion tonight. Item number two, 2025 utility abatement recommendations. So staff?
Yes, mayor and council, this item is not outlined in statute in any kind of way. This is a local city program. And historically, it goes back a couple of decades as well, at least to the early 2000s. Cities get involved in cultural organizations and social service sort of groups in a variety of different ways. Some of them provide direct funding. Some of them own different facilities or have partnerships. In Augusta's case, the manner in which you have been involved with those various groups is through the utility abatement program. And so when the program was created, which you did that for was essentially to provide utility assistance as the utility provider in this community and in that way, lower the operating costs for some of these cultural and social service organizations. So that's the origin of this program, goes back to the early 2000s. The most recent update to the policies, I believe, was in 2014. And a lot of these groups have been consistent over time. You've had one or two new ones that have been added in the last few years. But most of these have been fairly consistent year to year, going back decades. So with that, I'll turn it over to Shawna to speak to the committee's recommendations and the asks that were submitted from these various organizations.
At the November 4th city council meeting, the council appointed the ad hoc committee consisting of Jeff Brown, Kip Richardson, and Mike Martin to review the 2025 utility abatement applications. And the committee met on Wednesday, November 20th to discuss those. This table here shows what each organization received in 2024, what their actual utility usage was for the one-year period, and then what their 2025 request is. And you'll notice that highlighted and kind of peach there. The Robinson Community Building just has one meter. And so we can't separate out the usage for the caring center versus the recreation commission. The recreation commission was newly created, so this is their first year to apply. And then the caring center, that 9,000 abatement is what they received in their old building before they moved into the Robinson Community Building. And so the city carried that amount over, that 9,000 amount over. And they received that abatement, and the school district is actually the one that gets the bill for that Robinson Community Building for the utility account. And so the school district accepts that utility abatement of 9,000, in lieu of them paying rent. And then the recreation commission, this year will be their first time that they're paying, or they're applying for the utility abatement. So last year, the electricity usage for the whole building was 38,446. And so this year, if they were granted the full amount they're asking for, the 30,000, and then the caring center received their full amount, the 9,000, then that would have covered all of their usage for the previous year. So if their usage is about the same, then those abatements, if they're granted this full amount, would cover their usage in the coming year, unless, you know, they use more. But the, some of the requests were higher than what the committee decided to recommend for their 2025 abatement. And, but the amount that the committee decided to recommend is still more than they've been using. So it seems like some of the organizations were asking for like a lot more than they actually use. So for instance, like the Twisted Oz Motorcycle Museum, they were asking for an abatement of 18,000, but their usage last year was under 12,000. And so in that case, the committee is recommending to grant the Twisted Oz an abatement of 14,000. So basically, the committee, in their recommendation, they're wanting to be able, for these organizations to be able to basically cover their utility costs, but not go way over, like not give them an excessive abatement when they haven't even gotten close to using that much electricity in the past. So if you want to go back up to that top chart on the first page, that has the list of the committee's recommendations for the abatements. And I did want to let you know that in the audience tonight, we have some representatives from the recreation commission here, if you have any questions for them. And then also, I wanted to let you know that Connie Thurman called, and she had said she had planned to be here tonight to talk about, or in case she had any questions for, about the theater or the art gallery. And she was too sick to come. She's got some kind of bug. And their organization, their board is having their meeting tonight, so they couldn't send anybody else either. So she apologized for that, and just wanted to let you know that she had planned to be here. So anyway, I'll just turn it over to questions if you have any questions of the recommission.
Counsel?
I think it's just a little bit misleading on the caring center, showing the 12-month actual usage of 38,446.
Right, and again, that's for the whole building.
Yeah, but when you add it up with the recreation committee, that adds it up another 38,000. So that makes an illusion there that we had a $72,000 or $76,000.
I did not, I did not add that in twice. I have it listed there in that, but I did not add it twice.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Right.
That's not, that's not the same thing. They did not have any, everything's figured out underneath the recommission there.
So I guess one of my questions, and maybe Josh, you can help me out on this. When I was sitting in the audience last year, looking at all this stuff, how often do the folks that are looking for the abatement have to present something in person? Or do they always just, after they get it once or twice, do they just send in the paperwork? And?
Yeah, so it's an annual process. And so that annual review that the committee did is normally the time that the organizations would present their materials and come in. The committee doesn't have like a set process for how you would want to do that. There's nothing that's been established, but I can give you some ideas of what has been done. So if it's an organization that has been very routine and in the program for a long time and has passed many previous reviews, generally, the committee hasn't asked them to come back in and present unless they've got a very specific question or unless there was a change in the ask. Any new organizations in the past that I've observed with the ad hoc committee, they've always asked them to at least come in or present something to try to get to know the organization and what they're asking, what they need the services for. But you have flexibility on those committees to handle that process how you would like in order to get to your recommendation. So I guess the short answer is, you don't have a fixed process for it, but that annual review and the committee work is generally when that would happen.
Also, let me interrupt. Since I've been here since 2022, there was one time that the committee members requested that I invite any organization that was asking for more than they received the prior year to come in and talk. And then another time, the committee did not ask for anybody to be invited to come and present anything. So it's kind of up to the ad hoc committee. Whatever they want us to do, we'll do.
I can also remember committees from maybe six, seven years ago making ask of the organizations to present their financials or to present their plan for energy efficiency. What are you doing to make sure that your building's as efficient as possible? So we've had committees that have gone that deep in some of the reviews. But again, it's kind of up to the committee, what you need information-wise to get to a recommendation.
Thank you, Josh.
Josh, is it possible, and could we do it on the recommended chart where the softball organization is simply listed as free service? I know that may have been their request on their application, but we've got historical data that kind of estimates where they should be at. And I think for the taxpayers who look at this, I think having some approximation of what that actually equates to would be helpful. I know on the next page, it shows it. So. So as far as listing that on what's approved, I think having that number in there and having that organization be dialed into what their details are would be prudent.
Absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah, and yeah, in in terms of presentation, that's totally fine. The reason that it's always been shown as a free service is that 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 number is totally up in the air, what their usage is may depend on the number of tournaments or the type of year that the folks have had. And so that number bounces all over the place where a lot of times the other asks are very consistent year over year. So that's generally why the wording is used. But in terms of presentation, showing that as a as an historical number as an example would would be clearer. So I understand that.
Sure. No, well, and I and I think even for their sake, though, right? I think it's not realistic to write an application for any grant or abatement that says free, like, and then we've got carte blanche to just do, right? I think having some accountability to, we usually spend about this much, we're going to do more next year, less next year, about the same. So it should be just like the other organizations are doing. So what it equates to from a math standpoint, right, is this sums up to be about the equivalent of about a mil, a little over a mil equivalent.
It it would be in that ballpark. Again, it's on the utility side, so it's not actually affecting property taxes. But from a dollar figure perspective, it is slightly higher than a mil. And just for the benefit of people at home, these are not like simply credits that are just added to an account. So if they don't use up to the approved request amount, they don't get awarded additional money. They only have their actual usage covered. So a lot of times you'll see they'll come in a little bit less than what the request ended up being.
So are there different organizations or additional organizations that use the softball diamonds up there that that adds to?
There probably can be, and also the school district activities. And it's hard to distinguish because you don't have different meters for the different activities. It's just meters on one facility.
My worry there, too, would be, do they have additional funds? I mean, if they if they say hit eleven thousand, where's that money going to come from? Would be that was my only worry. Some of these have a bank account and they have money in there. And if they went over, I think they could pull from it. I didn't know where they would, because I I kind of thought the same thing, but free is open. But I didn't want them, if it did go high, where is that going to come from, from the girls softball?
Which I think just leads us back. Other organizations requested a little bit more, thinking they may have more.
That's what I think. We just go a little higher number. We the only one we bumped up the committee was the senior center, because it felt like they were getting kind of close and we didn't want them worrying about money. Everyone else, we brought it down or left it alone, thinking they had enough web of room. But yeah, maybe we put it at like twelve or.
And just a couple of other bits of information for new council members or people at home watching. So some of these organizations also have different sources of funding. Some of them, they don't have very much funding at all unless it comes from the city. So as an example, Mid Kansas Community Action Program, MidCap, you can see that their total usage has always been more than double their request, but they get funding from the state, from the federal government, from other sources. So they've actually made a choice and have never submitted a request bigger than that eight thousand the entire time that I've been here. The senior center as well, they get funding from Butler County to help support some of their operations. In the other examples, most of these organizations, if they don't get donations or something like that to help support them, they don't have other funding coming in. And so that's just a little bit more context for a couple of these organizations that are on here, why you see some of these discrepancies.
I just got a quick question for the folks that were on the committee. So when you were when you were going down through the list, did you just kind of rate them to what was maybe the the biggest use in the community where most of the people were using? And that's how kind of allocated the money to? Or, you know, the the one that had the most tourists or I'm just trying to?
What was your ranking system? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you've got one, you know, some that people use all the time daily, some maybe only use it once or twice on the weekend. I don't know.
Pretty much all the above. I mean, we most of the things we know, most of us personally know, I mean, we know what the council, the arts council is or the theater. Most of us knew what what most of these items were on here, and we felt like we were acquainted with their process, their procedures and things. Some of us have been in stuff with the recommission, get helping to get set up, things like that. Felt like we knew what those were, how that they're communicating or how they're helping out or aiding people in the community and things. And that's kind of what we kind of went off of, is history and what we know. Thanks.
I would say, historically speaking, you guys, as a council and councils in the past, have done reviews of this program about four or five different times. And each time have provided instructions to a committee to try to come up with recommendations or process or different ways that you can create some of those filters and decide priorities and what organizations get what. And each time that process has happened, you've never settled on a series of recommendations as a committee that you can all or as a council that you can all agree on. And so the program has hardly ever changed. The last time you went through this, there were recommendations from a committee on different ways to to do those reviews and set some sort of criteria for organizations, but those ended up not passing. And so basically, you've got the same program that you've had for the better part of the last two decades.
One year, we were instructed to come up, the ad hoc committee was instructed to come up with a way to cap these. And so the ad hoc committee made recommendations, and then that was all shot down and went back to the way it's always been.
There was a cap at a mil value. There was a cap. I can't remember how the other cap was based, but yeah, every time that came up, just because the organizations are organizations that are prominent in the community and you know what they do and you've had such a long running relationship, it's always been hard to find ways to establish limits. And so as a result, the program has continued to creep up and get more expensive over time.
And I think, go ahead, go ahead.
You're fine.
I yield.
My other question was, did you talk to the arts council folks in person? Did they show up?
We didn't invite them.
You didn't invite them? Okay.
Was there any discussion about the recommission being a taxing entity or whether or not they should include it into their budget, their their electricity? That's my concern is something, I don't know if us giving money to another government agency is the best way to go or not, I don't know.
We looked at it as, you know, the recommission was was set up, you know, by a group of community members, the school has put in a lot of money into it and providing the the building itself. Right now, they've been, you know, they've been for most of the last year, they've been providing most of the paying for most of the bills and things like that on it. This is the first year that this come about with us actually helping to contribute to that. It felt like when we did it, when we were part of helping to set this up, we they came to us, the school, we partnered with them. I feel like this is part of our partnering with them still is because this is helping with some of the amenities and the things that people in our community are doing to help, you know, with our baseball programs, our little league programs, things in the community that help help keep our kids busy and things in the summertime, give them things to do, is going to provide more services to the people in our community. In June or July, they hired your new director, is that right? And so then, again, so the services, I think, will continue to increase and and get better based off of the information that the school presented to us last year and things, all the ideas and things that have been brought about and things. We feel like this is something that, again, we can be a team with the school and the community and to help create this recreation commission. And this is one way that we can, rather than going out and spending man hours doing it, which I know they would appreciate if we did that, too. But rather than going out and spending man hours, think we can help by helping to make the, you know, support the building up there through electrical services.
I agree with all that, but we should help them out. But I don't know if this is a program to do it through is my, I think there's probably a better way to make it more transparent what we're doing, I think. I don't know. It's kind of my thoughts.
I have another question about the Augusta Theater. I know that that is not energy efficient in there and that to get that coal, to get that cool. As they become more profit profitable, like we hope, and as they succeed, is there a way to wean them off to where we could do fifty fifty, where we do half, where they could split it with us, save the taxpayers money?
So I'm going to ask, I mean, I I appreciate the all the comments and the feedback and stuff, but if we're going to do this in as a as a council session here, then there's no reason to have a a committee set up to do this and make recommendations, because that's that's what we did. We went through this stuff and that's we set this up to help reduce the amount of time we sent spend talking back and forth about this, because everybody's got emotions in it and things like on what we're going to do. But we're we're trying to do the best job we can, the three of us. And like I said, if that's not the wish of the council, then we need to change that and go back to just making it a council discussion. And let's let's do that that way, rather than taking a recommendation out of one of the committees.
I I wasn't trying to recommend anything. I was just questioning, because this is my first year through the process.
That's already, that's been discussed every year for ten or twelve years. Every time something breaks at the theater, it's replaced with newer equipment that's more energy efficient to a point. But there's only so much you can do with that building without just tearing it down and building a new building.
That's not at all what I'm suggesting, I was just asking.
Well, I'm I'm giving you history. You know, I've worked on that building. I've been here for twenty some years. Every year, we've questioned that.
So we've even gone as far in the past, now, I don't know if it ever made it up to like council votes, but at least from an idea perspective, we've talked about that HVAC system that's in that building before. And in terms of long term savings, if you ran a return on investment, would you end up saving, in this case, not ratepayers, utility ratepayers, would you end up saving them money if you were to partner with the the Arts Council Theater folks to help upgrade that? And then you end up getting a savings annually through lower electric bills? Like, we we've had ideas kind of all over the board like that in the past, but nothing's really taken and and changed. But yeah, the those ideas have been talked about, but they just haven't gone further than a discussion like this one.
I think, Kip, to your comment, I would echo the appreciation that's been shown for the committee's work on this. And at the same time, I would also encourage other dialogue in these meetings, because the reality of it is we had a three person ad hoc committee that made recommendations, which does the does the heavy lifting of kind of narrowing it down, which is much appreciated. And then it, as said, even on here, consider approval, right? It's not guaranteed approval, I think, for the public's for the public's trust in this body. I think it's good that there's discussion and not simply just a rubber stamp. So I'm I'm favorable to that.
Can I ask the rec committee a couple of questions, just not considered my approval or not? I already know which way I'm going to vote, but.
Who's going to answer needs to come to the podium and identify yourself.
But I'd like like to ask you guys a couple of questions, so the city could know more about what you're doing right now. Because right now, all I know is there's a rec committee.
First of all, I'm Clinton Warner. I'm the new director. We're offering some some programming right now. We we just did, we're doing some adult programming, some kid programming, and we offer also Monday through Friday right now, open gym for the gyms, eight AM to five PM during the day, and then the evenings as well. We got two nights of pickleball and then two nights of just general open gym at the gym, as well as our youth basketball practices at our facility. Some adult programming going on right now is breakfast and bingo, working on some card groups as well during the day, and then also some youth programming and some fitness programming, working on getting all that lined out as well with with the facility. And then just some special events type things. We actually have a breakfast with Santa event this weekend at our facility. And then we had a youth soccer camp clinic this fall, and we'll continue building our youth sports and our youth programming as well as adult programming.
So are are you doing any youth sports right now?
We partnered up with the basketball association for this year, and then next year, we'll take over that. And then we'll probably take over the start taking over the process of the baseball program this this summer and possibly this softball going forward as well.
Yeah. So you're basically doing like five, six days a week?
Right now, we're we're doing five days a week. As as we grow and I'm able to get some staff, we'll we eventually, the plan is to be eventually a seven day a week facility where we can be open seven days a week.
All right. And you're open, how about how many hours?
Eight eight P or eight AM to eight PM right now, Monday through Friday.
Okay. And do you have a like Facebook or something?
Yep, Facebook group and then, yeah, Augusta Rec Center is the Facebook group.
All right. I just wanted to give people in the city a chance to know a little bit more, because I really, I don't get on Facebook that much anymore.
For sure.
And I wanted to hear what you guys were doing.
Yep, that's we're we're trying anyway, trying to build up and provide more things.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I just have one question for Councilman Burke. I want to make sure your your concern that you were raising, did you have thoughts on how you thought maybe that alternate solutions might be?
Not exactly, but I mean, we could allocate X number of dollars per year to assist in there if we if we feel like we need to.
Through a general fund type allocation?
Right.
Josh, as you hear that as an alternate, does that, how does that play out budget wise or process wise?
So di- different sources of funding. My, if I were to make an argument, one direction or another, based on the transparency component of that, I think I would argue that the utility abatement program is probably the more transparent in the sense that you you have metered usage amounts, you have actual numbers to work with, you know, actual cost. And the impact of providing that is is through utility abatement is different than the impact would be if you just paid it out of your own general fund. In that example, you would be essentially recreating the library problem. If you remember that the Augusta Public Library used to be in this program. And so this is actually a direct corollary, if you want to make a comparison, in which case I could see your argument, because you could argue that this is the exact same situation and we shouldn't repeat what the library did. But the library is a taxing entity and has its own dedicated mil levy, but it was going through this program. And so what was happening is you had a taxing entity that had an artificially lower mil levy, because the city was using utility rates to essentially subsidize and to help them cover costs. And we had a discussion at the staff level, at the council level years ago, and decided that if you're going to have a taxing entity, then that tax for transparency or other reasons should cover all of the costs associated with that entity. And so we ended up raising the working with them and raising the library's mil levy to cover their utility cost and taking them completely out of the abatement program. And so in this case, if you want to look at the recommission as a taxing entity that exact same way, which they are, then you could apply that library argument and say that's how you should treat it. If you want to look at them as a nonprofit, like these other nonprofit organizations, then you can run it through this program. I I think you could argue that both of them are ways you can provide funding, and both of them would be acceptable, allowable under law, all those sort of things, but it's a matter of preferences. And when we looked at it from the library perspective years ago, we didn't like that because it seemed like it was creating an artificial subsidy that maybe wasn't as clear and people didn't realize what they were funding. So I I understand that argument, because I remember having those debates on the library. I I was, what I'm pulling up here, just so everybody can see it, is the resolution for this program. So it outlines the use of the funds, what it was created for. So I wanted to see if there was any useful reference in here that helped us understand how to allocate this money. So it says, the governing body has authorized on a So, says the governing body has authorized on a case-by-case basis utility abatements and credits for various nonprofits. The governing body regards the use of utility abatements as a corporate responsibility for quality of life of Augusta's citizens. The purpose of these abatements and credits are to assist these nonprofit organizations with their annual operating expenses to support arts, cultural recreation, and community assistance programs. Governing body has determined there is a need to establish guidelines, and then the guidelines follow. So it says, facilities owned and managed by City of Augusta, used for public purposes, shall automatically receive abatement. So basically, if we operate the facility, we're just gonna provide that to the public. There's, there's no additional programming or review associated with it. Section two says, organizations will submit their application to City of Augusta in November, requesting utility abatements. That's the process that was just done. And then it outlines what these, um, organizations are required to submit, name, background, contact information, mission statement, demonstration that they're nonprofit, financials, statement how savings will be used to enhance their services, various items like that. And then afterwards, it just says, governing bodies shall review on a case-by-case basis and reserves the right to determine parameters. So what you have always reserved is the right to determine your parameters and say you'll review it on a case-by-case basis. So unfortunately, that doesn't give you a set parameter on how you look at all of these cases, and you don't have to treat them the same, because you have chosen not to by policy. And, and so tha- that, that's where we're at, and that's why you have some variation year to year when the utility, uh, payment committees do their reviews. Um, the, the level and depths of the reviews, the information, they need to be comfortable with the recommendations. That's why you can see discrepancy that is also entirely consistent with your own actions when you compare the library to the Rec Commission, where both would be acceptable based on past history. But the most recent time you looked at it, we, we chose to pull the library out. Um, the library's was a little bit deeper, though, and, and so, let, let me be clear on that. The library also had other asks that they made of the city throughout the year to assist with the facility and maintenance and other sort of things that did hit our annual operating budget in the property tax area. And so we looked at all of that in combination with the utility abatement program and said, from a transparency perspective, that doesn't seem right to us, because it seems like you're utilizing one taxing entity to cover some of the cost of another. And so in that case, when we decided to pull those other things out of the operating budget, the utility abatement program went with it. And then you made the change and said, library, cover all your costs. So there was an additional layer there. It wasn't strictly on the utility abatement side, but you can make an argument that this is the same, um, that this is the same situation here.
I mean, we have to remember, though, the caring center is thrown in there. They're using that facility, and we can't meter them separately.
Right, a- and Shawna explained that you did have a meter on them in their previous building, and it was about nine thousand dollars in usage, and so that first year when they moved, that's what you approved, was the nine thousand in usage in their new building, and he just kinda capped them at that. I think we had anticipated that at some point, the Rec Commission, when it got up and running, would probably come and make this ask, and this was the first year that that ask has happened. And so now you're having to decide how you want to, to apply them within the context of this program.
Thank you, guys, for doing all the work on that. Appreciate it.
Yep, I agree, and I appreciate the background there, Josh and Eric. I appreciate the question. Um, I see the, the Rec Commission as a startup. I think we're, we're learning our way forward as we get some time under our belt, and we're pretty young still in that. So I think as this goes forward and as that resolution allows for case-by-case basis, these conversations can evolve as needed. So I would make the motion to approve the ad hoc committee's recommendations for the 2025 utility abatement program.
A second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Uh, thi- this might just be a, a little piece of advice for the Rec Commission and also council both going forward in future years, that given that dynamic of the mill levy component and the fact that this is a case-by-case review and is not always fixed, that when you plan your budgets, you may build enough flexibility into them that if this were to ever go away from future committees or future councils, you can still operate in its absence. So this may just be something on top of your operations that help you in a given year, but that would make sure that you have enough flexibility in your budgets that if for some reason a future council ever changed, uh, this award, that you wanna get yourselves in trouble financially. So I just wanna offer that advice to, to everybody, so we've heard that out loud.
Yes, and every two years, there's an election that four people can rotate it off of this, so it could, the thought process could totally change in two years, so. Okay, uh, matters from and for council.
We still have one more item. That's it.
Oh, yeah. Erica's favorite thing, the write-off in collections, item three.
The shortest thing you consider tonight, so. Um, this is, Mayor, council, this is pretty routine in nature. It's something we have to do at the end of every year to get, get these accounts off of our books, so we don't continue to carry, um, a debt that we're not able to collect. Um, as you will see, I'm recommending that there's twenty-one utility accounts and the amount is seven thousand, seven thirty-nine, thirty-two that be written off. These are all deemed uncollectible, either because they are bankruptcies, deceased account holders, or accounts with less than a twenty-five-dollar balance, on which the collection agency won't collect on. Uh, three accounts are in bankruptcy for a total of three thousand, forty dollars and eleven cents. Twelve accounts with deceased account owners with a total of four thousand, forty-seven dollars. Five utility accounts with a balance of less than twenty-five dollars for ninety-two eighty-five, and then there was one business account that's deemed uncollectible in the amount of five fifty-nine, thirty-six. Um, I will note that after the last couple of years, the numbers had increased quite a bit. My staff has been working hard to try to keep those numbers down a little bit more. Um, part of that is by not allowing accounts to go past due as far as they had in the past and stick closer to the, um, policy that you guys have in place for arrangements, and which does mean that we're disappointing some of our citizens. However, um, we also are trying to keep the collections to a minimum so that the council is, staff is, well, the council and the city isn't losing money, so. I will note that this is about eight thousand dollars less than what we wrote off last year. And so I feel like some of the things that my staff is doing, um, are doing is helping to reduce that number. Now, these write-offs are, uh, utility accounts that will basically be unrecognized revenue. So we bill for these, and we're not gonna receive the revenue once these are written off. And then in addition to the recommendation for the write-offs, I usually present our collections for the year, just so you can kind of see what, um, what, what we're doing as far as collections right now. Um, and since 2020, we've been using the Collection Bureau of Kansas for our collections. We also use state set-off in the past, but now CBK is handling that for us, so they submit it to both themselves and to, uh, the state set-off, and if they collect, uh, they get their cut out of that, but then we're not having to deal directly with the state set-off on that. Um, so if you look at the, uh, twenty-twenty, it's twenty-twenty-four. I didn't move the dates. I apologize for that. But, um, there's a hundred and sixty-four accounts that were written or sent for collection this year versus a hundred and ninety-six last year and a hundred and ninety-two the year before. So the number of accounts is reducing. The dollar amount of the accounts are reduced by about twenty-four thousand dollars, and our collections have increased by about twenty thousand dollars. We don't control the collection, except to make sure that we get as much information as our cus- from our customers that we can, so that the collection agency is better able to locate them once they've left a debt with us. Uh, but the one thing we are able to control a little bit better is the account balances and trying to keep those from going too far past due. Our citizens have been much better about keeping arrangements and paying, but also we've had to be a little bit more strict about not allowing them to go too far. Um, so with that, I will turn it over for questions and a motion if you so desire.
Counsel?
Eric, I'd just say thank you to you and your team on making such good progress on that. I see fewer collected, collection accounts and higher volume of collected dollars, so that's the right direction in both ways.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the write-off of twenty-one utility accounts in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine and thirty-two cents.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, ma- matters from and for council. First thing, we want to, uh, remind ourselves that there is a jo- uh, in our next meeting, we're gonna, uh, yeah, take input and comment on the proposed amendments to the 2024 budget. Couldn't remember the word amendment. So that's at our next meeting. We've already voted on that to make that happen. And after that, I'm just gonna-
When you say next meeting, you mean next Monday?
Next regular scheduled council.
Next regular scheduled meeting. Not this Monday.
Budget hearing for amendments on the sixteenth, work session on the night.
Correct, okay.
So Josh, go ahead, and if you've got anything.
I, I do not, other than just the reminder of that work session on the ninth, and, uh, make sure if you haven't, uh, checked your email recently, uh, look at my last city manager update email. That has a primer, a little bit deeper detail on that work session. We'll get you some packet of materials, and we'll have a lot to discuss. It'd be a fun one.
Okay. Ignite Augusta has the park lit up, and they run basically from six o'clock in the evening to ten o'clock in the evening. They close off the road access in and out of the park on the north side. So just be aware of that. If you wanna think you're gonna swing through and go up to, uh, Loomis Land, you can't get through that way. They have it blocked off. They open it back up after ten PM. And it looks really good, and they've worked really hard on it, and there's a lot of new displays this year. So go, go visit it. So Mr. Martin, do you have anything tonight?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Burke?
No, sir.
Mr. Bailey?
No, sir.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, um, we've had the same complaints, uh, from businesses downtown that it's pretty dark down there, Josh, and I didn't know if there's any way we can get any brighter lights that fit those light poles, um, at all, that would lighten it up down there. It's hard to see after six o'clock nowadays. Of course, in the summer, it doesn't make a difference, but, uh, from six to nine, some people shall open, six to ten.
So, I mean, if there's bulbs out, replacing bulbs i- in terms of can you make them brighter, that I-
I didn't know there's, I don't know if there's another, you know, wattage we can, you know, go up a level?
No. They're pretty much-
Several of them are not working. I know the-
A few that aren't working, for sure.
They kinda come on and off. It's very weird.
Yeah.
I, we've stood out there a couple of times, and you can just see various ones coming on and off throughout the night. But yeah, I don't know if you can go brighter, but I just think that they were all on. And but like I said, they're just going on and off random.
I didn't know if they're LEDs or not.
Uh, most of them have been switched out to LED.
Okay.
They started out, they were metal halide, and they were designed by an electrical engineer for the amount of light that was supposedly required to light that street. And then they've been converted to LED, and it's even brighter than what was there. Any other things?
Oh, that's it.
Mr. Richardson?
No, sir. Thank you.
No, sir.
Nothing from me tonight.
No, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, make a motion, move, move into executive session for one hour to discuss the, an individual employee's performance to conduct the city manager's annual evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-B-one. I have the city manager, Josh Shaw, join the council in executive session, and we'll return back to council chambers at nine oh five PM.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been trying to listen.
Thank you, guys.
I had one quick thing I wanted to mention just before we get out of here, real fast.
Actually, we need a motion to exit executive session first.
Oh, that's right. Okay. No action was taken.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to exit.
Wait a minute. Ready? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to exit executive session where no action was taken.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to exit executive session where no action was taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
One quick thing I had was, I just wanted to mention that I noticed the Parks Department has put trees in the cemetery on the east side along both the drives. If you get a chance, stop by and take a look at those. They're really nice and stuff, so they're a neat addition to it. So, thank you to the cemetery crew and the Parks Department. And then with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.